Extra, extra, read all about it. Polk County Public Schools Superintendent is retiring. Who will become the next leader of the school district? Who will set the vision and direction for an organization that impacts more than 100,000 students' lives? And what will the junior superintendent have to say about this?
Topper 2020. This year makes me sicker than double veggie day at the cafeteria. Sure, I'm happy in all that the superintendent gets to take a load off relaxing at the beach. But the game is putting me in a tough spot finding a replacement. Sure, the board has their own so-called search firm looking high-low for a new superintendent. But what about the students? That's who the superintendent will really be working for. I'm going to make my own search firm and get the best gumshoes, PIs, and sleuths on the job. It'll turn this county upside down to find clues on the best superintendent qualities. This will be my biggest decision yet, and I'm going to take it very, very seriously. I love cat videos. Oh, I have a Zoom call to make. Hi, everyone. I've called you together because Polk County needs a new superintendent. You remember how awesome our last one was? We need one just as good or even better. I need some ideas as to what we need to look for. Allison.
Well, obviously, we need someone who has a plan for e-learning. This is a new normal, and we have to continue to improve the way we teach our students virtually.
Right, plus more cat videos in the curriculum.
What?
Next, Alessandro.
Well, the soup needs to be tough as nails and protect our interest as students. Whole County Public Schools puts students first, right? And our superintendent needs to live that.
And every Tuesday needs to be tater tot day.
That, that has nothing to do with what I-
Tyler, you're up.
Our next superintendent needs to understand the needs of all students. From pre-kenygrander to students like me who are studying in the school district transition program. We're all different immediate superintendent who can stand up for all of us.
Oh, I love it, I love it, I love it. Trenton, bring us on.
A superintendent must actively engage the community in thoughtful, productive conversations to ensure the best experience for our students, staff, and parents. They must inspire everyone to constantly improve themselves.
I hope they inspire you to do your homework.
Mom, I'm on a call.
Excuse me, superintendent.
It's okay. I think these are great ideas about a new superintendent. We've got a lot of work to do, people. Let's get out there and search for the super. A super search.
Wait, what's the timeline for our search?
Do we need to go out to the community to see what they want?
Where can people give their opinions about the next superintendent?
How involved will the community be in the selection process?
I, I don't actually know. But I know somebody who does.
Hello, everyone. I'm Lori Cunningham, chairman of the Polk County School Board.
Hello, Madam Chair. Could you explain to my super sleuths the process of finding a superintendent?
I would love to. We've contracted with the Florida School Boards Association to help us in the search for our next superintendent of schools. Over the next several months, we will conduct surveys and forums with employees, students, parents, and the public to help us understand exactly what Polk County needs in our next superintendent. Selecting a new superintendent is a huge task, and we need the community to help get it done. As we proceed through the search process, junior superintendent, you and your super sleuth team will need to pay attention to the updates on our district's website and social media accounts. I would like to ask you to encourage the public to follow us, stay engaged in the search process, and participate in the surveys and public forums as they are announced.
You've been a great help. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely, and good luck, super sleuths.
Okay, team, any questions? Good, then get out there and find us a new superintendent. What a day. I think I'm going to take a nap. But first, more cat videos.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the Polk County School Board Work Session of December the 8th, 2020. And we're excited for everyone to be here and join us today. And at this time, with no further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Byrd, who will run our work session today. Ms. Byrd?
Thank you, and welcome back, everyone. And I want to say Happy December, and hopefully you're enjoying this nice, cool weather as December comes in. So the first item we have for you today is, we're actually going to do items one and two because it's looking at Candy Amato, and she's coming up, so she'll take items one and two.
Good afternoon, everyone. I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. So I have two items for you today. We have the Bridge Prep contract coming to you for review. Oh, sorry. And then we have Cypress Junction, which has a charter renewal. So item one is the, sorry, tried to get all my paperwork. Is the Bridge Prep contract, I believe? Is that the first one?
Yes.
Okay. So this is a standard contract that's provided with, from DOE that we negotiate with, with legal counsel. During the application presentation, the board requested three items be included during contract negotiations. Those were located on page 28 of the contract. You all had requested that the location be changed from the Lakeland area to the Davenport area. They have agreed to that. They've actually already secured a location, and they have provided the address for that. On page 34, it was requested that at least one of the board members reside in Polk County. That has been embedded into the contract as well. And on page 35, it was requested that Bridge Prep hold at least two of their meetings annually in Polk County. And that has all been agreed upon. So the board has the complete contract for review, and then it has already been public notice, and then will be voted on in January.
Are there any questions? Ms. Miller?
Excuse me while I get out of the mask. I just want to point out that I appreciate the work that you've put in with negotiations, or not negotiations, with contract writing for this. I also want to point out that these are the things that, this is what good collaboration looks like. For this company and others that come in, this is what we want to see. We want to see people who are wanting to work with our district and partner with our district. How this was originated at the very beginning wasn't necessary, and it was unfortunate. And I hope that this company learns, as well as other groups, that districts are about collaboration and working to what's best for their constituents, that sending in people to make demands and, and write letters with half-truths aren't, you know, it's not, it's just not necessary. I think we have a great staff. I think they work diligently to make sure our contracts are thorough and to meet the needs of the board. And what I asked for is exactly what they have here, and I just want to, I thank you, and I want to thank the legal team that helped make this happen. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. Are there any more questions on Bridge Prep? Mr. Alan?
Great. Yeah, I just, again, thank you for this. You know, for me, I think I have the least amount of context on this, so thanks for those clarifying responses earlier today. Can note some of those addendums that were made to the contract. Just moving forward for me, would love to know if, if we have any cap on the number of nonprofit charters that we provide oversight and accept within a certain period of time? I don't know if that would be a question for Mr. Bridges. I know, based on Florida state law, that that cap was removed, but was just curious if we have anything from a local standpoint. Okay. Second question on that one in particular was any population studies that we do or any forms of research to help determine the needs? I thought it was great hearing the, the transition from South Lakeland to Davenport. I know that we've got the elementary school moving in Davenport with the high school as well. So, you know, would this addition disrupt or enhance our plans in this particular area? Just a simple, just some thoughts there as I was reading through the agenda.
So are you asking in regards to the research that's done?
I guess that question, thanks for the quick response there, Mr. Bridges. I guess the population studies, any, any of that, that, that we're doing-
So I think that might be partnered with Mrs. Usher and her team. You know, they attend those county commission meetings and the zoning types of meetings because when Bridge Prep actually provided us with the address, we did reach out to Pam Luce, who works in Mrs. Usher's office, to get that additional information. So they are, they sit in on those committee meetings through the county and through the district.
Great, thank you so much. That's all I have, Superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on Bridge Prep? Ms. Cunningham?
Yes, just perhaps just a comment. I just want to say thank you. When they originally did come to us, they were very set on areas in South Lakeland, and with the growth that we're experiencing in the Northeast, I really felt it poignant to ask them to reconsider and look at some other options. Because even though we are building some new schools, the growth rate in that part of the county is just off the charts. Even looking, I was just up there the other day driving around, and the amount of subdivisions and all that are coming in is just unbelievable. So economic development is still going strong despite COVID, it looks like, and families are moving in. So I'm just really glad, and I want to publicly thank Bridge Prep for considering the options that we gave them, and in particular, the location, because I really do feel we're going to need that school once it gets up and running. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, you can proceed with item two.
Okay, item two, Cypress Junction. So I did, or Mrs. Winchester did email you the PowerPoint. I did provide a paper copy for you just so that you have. I'm going to try to go through that rather quickly just to maximize and honor everyone's time. But obviously, if you have any questions, please let me know. So Cypress Junction is up for, their charter is up for renewal. And these are the, this is the Florida statute that outlines the renewal process and what we are allowed in the confines that we have to follow. This is our renewal process. We kind of went into a little more detail of what we had to do. It obviously had to be modified due to COVID, and so this is what would happen during a normal renew, renewal process. We did have to tweak it a little. I do want to give a huge shout out and thanks to the charter review team. As you can see, the people who participate in the review team, they already have a heavy workload, and to have them carve time out of their day and their calendar in our district schools to help participate in this is a monumental task. So I just wanted to make sure they were publicly recognized, and a kudos to them. So this is actually what the review process looks like. So the review team looks at the following pieces before we go forward with making a recommendation. Is it an academic, is the program an academic success? Obviously, we want to see growth, and we want to see performance. Is the school a viable organization? And is the school faithful to the terms of its previous charter, to its application and its current contract? Just a quick background, so Cypress Junction opened in 2016. So this is their very first five-year renewal. Their contract and their charter actually expires on June 30th, 2021. But due to the circumstances, we wanted to get a jump on this in case who knows what the spring brings us in 2021. So we certainly didn't want to wait until the last minute. So we, in the past, would take that entire charter review team and just invade the campus and do a complete walkthrough, set up meetings, talk with students, talk with teachers, talk with the governing board, but due to circumstances, that didn't take place. So we had to host many sessions. So for example, Mike Wiggins had to physically go to the campus to do the walkthrough to make sure they're meeting school safety components. That can't be done virtually, boots on the ground in that case. The curriculum department actually wanted to walk, walk the classrooms. Some of that can be done virtually, but they wanted to get a feel for the environment and for the atmosphere. So there were several onsite visits as well as a virtual session to conduct the review. These are their demographics for the years that they have been operating. And I did provide the percent along with the number, just so that it was clear. They serve K-8 with 191 students. And this is their current student performance based on their FSA data. Obviously, it would have been great to have that fourth year of data so that we could really see a trend in what's going on. But we are, we have three years, so we'll go with what we have. As you can see, in 2016, 17 school year, they were an A, and both the 27, 2017, 18, and the 18, 19 year, they were a C. So these are the renewal indicators, and you do have a copy of the evaluation tool that the committee, as well as the school, had access to. So this is just a quick screenshot of the different areas that we kind of honed in on to see where they fall in regards to the matrix. The committee found several strengths. I'm not going to read all of these to you. I'm just going to hit a few highlights. Our main thing is that their target population is consistent with their application, which is huge. It's really important that they, they held true to what they wanted and what they stated. Their CUME folders and their ESE folders are in compliance. They even have a full-time dedicated ESE facilitator, which is huge for a school of only 191 students. And that's, that's a lot of dollars that they're expending, but they know it's important. The school collaborates on a regular basis with not just, not just the charter office, not just the ESE senior manager, but various departments in Polk County, which is, which is great to have that collaboration and that open communication. They follow all of our district critical incident response plans, and they log everything in our district log. They have maintained financial transparency, and they have not found themselves in any deteriorating financial condition. That's huge in today's world of what's going on. They have an unrestricted fund balance at the end of the 1920 year sitting at about 15%. So, which is significant. They have always met their enrollment targets, their FTE, which has, have allowed stability in their funding. Even now with COVID, they have not seen a drop in enrollment. And I want to say there's a, they have about 95% of their students back face-to-face. They have a significant number of their kids back. But the Montessori environment already lends itself to those outside classrooms and that type of collaboration. So they do receive additional funding through federal grants. They've got their IDA money, their Title II money, and they were entitled to CARES Act money as well. And they have a sufficient, sufficient amount of money and reserves to meet any obligations that may arise, and they have an extensive amount of line of credit for any unforeseen circumstances. And they also have transparent communication between their governing board and their school administration, and that was very apparent during our virtual meeting when their board members were, were participating. It wasn't a one-man show. They all participated, they all had comments and could answer questions. Their board is strong and active, and they are very well-known. Their presence is avail, it is there. Their mark is made in downtown Winter Haven. The pictures and the information that they shared with us was impeccable of what they do. So they, they are there. And I thought this was really great. CGM covers the fees associated with reading endorsement, which is quite pricey, as well as they cover all of the Montessori certification fees for their teachers. So I thought that was commendable. That said, there were also some recommendations that the, that the charter review team found. They felt that their Tier III students needed to be properly identified and focused based on their STAR data. They needed to identify a progress monitoring tool for their science and civics. They really felt direct instruction should maximize the rigor and high-order thinking skills before students break into small group. Because of that Montessori curriculum, their, their presentation is a little different than in a regular classroom. They felt that a correlation between grading practices and assessment performance would be vital, and it needed to be a practice that they reviewed. And then we felt it was important that they continue to identify their diversity so that they are marketing and matching what the local community is representative. So to create a, a marketing plan, a recruitment plan to address those needs. And then finally, the charter review team, after a lengthy conversation, felt that at this point moving forward, they would recommend a five-year renewal for their charter with the new proposed contract terms being July 1st, 2021 through June 30th of 2026. However, the next steps for the board would be the superintendent would make a recommendation to school board members. That, the board would then vote on that recommendation in January. If approved, the charter office and in combination with general counsel, Mr. Bridges, and Cypress Junction Montessori, we would then move into contract negotiations.
Thank you. Are there any questions on Cypress Junction Montessori? Ms. Miller to Ms. Reynolds?
I just want to say that I've visited Cypress Junction. This is a great example of what charter can do. The Montessori schools are very much wanted here in Polk County. The waiting lists are very long for them. Cypress Junction does an amazing job. The families in Winter Haven support this school. I think that this is a positive thing. I appreciate the inclusive effort that they make. You don't always see that. The Montessori method does give leeway to a different learning style that is unique and is helpful to many students, different types of students. So I just want to thank the Cypress Junction Montessori staff for what they're doing, and I approve, I think this is, this is a great idea, and I know that we're going to continue to support the Cypress Junction Montessori.
Thank you. Ms. Reynolds?
My comments are very similar to Ms. Miller's. If you haven't had a chance to visit Cypress Junction, it is a force to be reckoned with, and I highly recommend going out to visit. They will serve you tea in one of their second-grade classrooms the second you walk in the door, and they know how to completely prepare it themselves, which was very impressive to me. But more so, the community involvement. I've gotten to know Katrina and Karen very well through PEP. They're very involved with PEP because they're also a public school, even though they're charter. But this is exactly what charter schools were designed to do, to give a different opportunity for students that need a little bit different educational model. I want to thank our charter department for splitting out that ESE and gifted populations because it is, we oftentimes see them lumped together, and it's a very different population. But specifically, kudos to Cypress Junction for continuously increasing the number of ESE students they serve. And that's huge because it's, we know that it's harder to serve those kids, and it takes more money, and that they have, you know, they've, they've put in the work to make sure that they're able to serve all students. So I can't say enough good things about them, but you definitely should go visit if you have the opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Allen?
Yeah, I would say the same as both of you guys. I did have a chance to get over and visit as well. I love the etymology, the, you know, the name Cypress Junction as it connects right there with the railroad crossing and so forth in that downtown area. This is my first glance to, to see actually the charter review process. So very thorough. It's great to see that we have that sense of accountability and projecting that outward and, and how they're serving and building their curricular initiatives to service our students. So that was a really thorough process, some great recommendations as well. Excited for Ms. Winningham. Her engineering background, I mean, she's got the know-how to keep this thing moving forward. So, well done. I did like the modernistic design as well as they had in all that furniture. It was very soothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Phils?
I'm sorry. You acknowledge me?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
I didn't hear, I'm sorry. I have not had a chance to go to visit the school, but I've been invited. So it's evident that they want to collaborate with the school district. I had a question on page four on the demographics. If I'm looking at this correctly, minority population is 36.13% this school year, if I'm looking at it correctly. And then the, the recommendation is to create a recruitment plan to address the diversity in the school compared to the local community. So what is the goal? Do you know what the goal is?
I'm sorry, so their, their current minority is 36%. So we just wanted to ensure that they continue to maintain what the population is at, as, at large in that area, in the surrounding area. So downtown Winter Haven, you've got, you know, Garner down the street. You've got Enwood over the, you know, by, on the other side of Lake Howard, which are normally higher, higher minority students in that school. So it's just really just making sure that they continue. Sometimes Montessori has, carries the connotation that it could be a private school, and just making sure that it's, it's well-known that it is a public school. There is no fee to attend the school, and just to continue to market to all of those areas. And I know they have already reached out to several of the churches. First Missionary Baptist with Reverend Gollison, and working through the PEP and through different organizations, through the recreational center on Avenue T, just to tap in and making, making sure everyone in the community knows they're there and that it is free for all students.
So there's really not a goal. It's just encouraging them to continue to have diversity within their schools. Looking at what I see here and compared to many other charter schools that we looked at, I think their minority percentage is pretty good. I know it could be better, but I just wanted to make sure if there was any specific goal.
No, there was not a specific goal. It was just to keep that on the forefront.
Thank you. Mrs. Miller?
Thank you. I just have one other question. They no longer, we no longer service them with transportation. Were they able to provide transportation? Has that affected their population?
I don't believe it has negatively impacted. They did not make that as a concern, but they have contracted with a, I believe they work with Compass Middle School to provide their, their transportation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding Cypress Junction Montessori? Okay, thank you so much. Okay. Thank you so much. As Ms. Dodge is going to make her way next, we have our policy updates. And this month, you have the policy updates that are coming from Neola. Not sure if Ms. Dodge is using the computer, so we want to make sure we wipe down the keyboards on that one.
Good afternoon. How are we doing?
You have to raise your mic. There you are. Thank you.
Good afternoon. How are we doing?
We're doing great.
I'm glad to hear that. On today's work session agenda, we had several policies and one bylaw. The first, the bylaw I had emailed you late about, but I did email you. So I do apologize for it being tardy. It has changed since the last time you saw it in October, and that is the Standards of Ethical Conduct bylaw. The language was modified based on the board's conversation, and you had asked for it to be brought back to the work session so that instead of saying that board members must have a sincere desire to serve, in the second paragraph on the first page, it says that board members are expected to have a sincere desire. And then on the third page, where the language regarding decisions by the board, is this like really crazy? Okay, where in the paragraph where it discusses when the board makes decisions, you make decisions as a whole. There were some questions about expressing minority opinions. And so I worked with Neola to come up with some language. We left the language as it is because it was pretty much standard throughout the districts in Florida. But we did put a statement in there that says that if a board member voices a contrary opinion, they have a they should just make sure that it is understood that that is their personal opinion and not the opinion of the board. That is on page three, the only new language on that page, the language in green there. And it reads each board member it originally read, each board member must recognize that decisions must be made by the board as a whole, and that when made, these decisions must be supported by the entire board. And so there was a discussion last time regarding that language, and I took it back to Neola, and they gave me some language to add just to make just to clarify when someone does have a difference of opinion with how the board voted.
Are there questions questions on this policy that we have before you? Your Board bylaw 124, Standards of Ethical Conduct. Okay, Ms. Dodge, make her see.
Okay, the next policy is professional development, and that has been updated in all three policies, all three section employee sections to because of changes to state rule regarding professional development. And then there were there was initially errors in the administrators and support staff policies. They all said instructional staff, so we corrected that. The next one is articulation and access to the Florida College System. These have been updated to based on changes in statute so that so that when our career centers have a have a when they're I'm sorry. I'm still back on another one. When when they have an area that overlaps with the state college, they have agreements that need to be in place based on state statute. And so that was placed in the policy. And then in the career and technical education policy, that language was also placed in there along with contracts that are required for our career centers to have contracts with our each high school that they serve. The school health services policy was updated to, again, according to statute, to put language in regarding what happens when a student needs to be baker acted to make sure that parents are notified, and then everything is done by the school before that happens that needs to be done. Immunization and health exams is updated to remove the reference to scoliosis exams because that was placed in the school health services policy instead. And then the social media policy, we have been foreshadowing for several months now, and it is finally here, and it's rather extensive. It's a brand-new policy, but it basically outlines the use and commenting and everything regarding district's social media platforms, how to apply and and use them, and how to comment on them as an employee of the school district. And, you know, it's it's just an extensive. It's an overall guideline of how social media should be used on behalf of the school district.
Mrs. Cunningham?
Overall, I just want to commend you. I really appreciated the color coding. I thought that was very helpful as I moved through section to section. I loved seeing all the colors, it just whatever when you're reviewing things. It's just very helpful to me, and I noticed that this time very poignantly. So I thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Welcome. Thank you.
Mrs. Miller?
Thank you. I'm back and forth on all the pages. I need to go back to everything printed for me. Can you talk a little bit about the changes to the Baker Act notifications? Because I know that was that was a concern for the community for a while, that if a student was baker acted, the parents were finding out af after the fact. So can you talk a little bit about that, please?
So the language actually just talks about making sure that a principal has verified that every de-escalation, de-escalation, it's not the right word, strategy has been used before we we call someone to baker act a student to make sure that we've done everything possible for this not to happen before law enforcement is called, unless they think that a student could harden themselves or somebody else.
So we're addressing the staff in this one and not the and not really the communication with the guardian or parent at the time?
Right, but I want to say that there's language that says every effort is going to be made to contact the parent beforehand.
And I I think this is a great improvement mainly because of the push for mental health. Not too long ago, Baker Acts were high based on supports, needed supports, which I think we've increased, and that's really helped the students who are in those situations because we all know that if we don't help the behaviors or the student when they come back, there'll be multiple Baker Acts, and that's what we want to avoid. So I appreciate the work that's been done on that policy specifically.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions regarding our policy updates for this month? Okay, CNN, thank you, Mrs. Dodge. We really appreciate your work on that one.
May I just say that the the bylaw will be on the board agenda tonight because it was advertised, so we just went ahead and put it on both. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item you have coming before you, actually the one I'm excited about, Early Childhood Learning Center at Willow Oak. So we have Ms. Usher coming forward to share this information, and we also have Mrs. Townley coming. Board members, what I want to tell you is that even though it's on the work session agenda, it's also on your board meeting agenda. If this is something you really want us to move forward with because of the time sensitive with the construction and everything, we will move forward with this after an approval tonight. But I think it's an exciting as we look at trying to make sure that we start out catching our babies early, and we're not waiting until third grade. We're trying to put plans in place. So I'm going to turn it over to these two ladies. Thank you.
Yes, good afternoon.
You may have to pull the mics down a little closer to you.
Okay, yes. I'll go over the physical components of the Early Childhood Learning Center, and I'll ask Mrs. Townley to go over the academics. We're proposing to have this at Willow Oak School, the new school we're building in Mulberry. It was referred before to as 28. Willow Oak School, it's opening in August 2021. It is on 20 acres, and the plant capacity is 996. This is the elevation of what it would look like. This is the parent drop-off, and over this side, this is Bailey Road, and on this side is the bus drop-off. Again, just a closer look, just want to take this opportunity to show you the elevations of the school. And it is based on all the security that came out. This prototype has an enclosed courtyard, so for the safety of the students. Okay, now to the Early Childhood Learning Center. What is proposed is four classrooms, one multipurpose room, offices and administrative area, bathrooms, and playground. This is an elevation of what we're proposing that it will look like. It will be on the Willow Oak School site, so the colors will match the main school. This is the floor plan where we have the four classrooms. We have admin up here, and then we have the multipurpose here. Just a shot of what a typical classroom looks inside like inside. We're proposing this was afterthought. We had already designed the site when we came up with the idea to try to put an early learning center there. So I mentioned this is the parent loop. So the the drop-off for the early learning center will come off the parent loop, and this is for several reasons, and the main one being safety and security. The architect showed us different options, but we thought this option was the best out of the three options they showed us. Again, it will be back in this area of the parent loop. The schedule, we were hoping to get it done the same time as the school in August, but it might lag a little bit. It might be December 2021. And to build it, it'll cost us $2.8 million. We will not use sales tax. We will use impact fees because it's additional capacity, so we can use impact fees for this. So that's the end of the physical part, if there are any questions.
No, and we'll let Ms. Townley go with the academic piece of that.
All right. Thank you very much. So it's a very exciting opportunity for our youngest scholars to have this type of a setting. And what we would propose, and this being hopefully the first of more to come, is that we would have a comprehensive continuum of all of our preschool programs. So we could realistically have up to 72 of our preschool students learning under that roof that Ms. Usher showed. And we would start based on the needs in the area with potentially 36 students coming from our Head Start, our federally federally funded program for low-income families. We would have a Head Start pre-K for students with disabilities blended unit to accommodate at least 18 students. If not more, we'd have some flexibility as the need arose, and as well as our VPK program. So by having all of those different programs under one roof, we could meet any needs of any of our four-year-olds as they prepare for kindergarten.
Are there any questions? Any questions? Ms. Reynolds?
I know you said you're not sure if it'll be ready in August. If it's not ready until December, is the intention to try and enroll students starting in the spring of next year?
I would like to have them right away in December.
So as soon as we can get them in the building, okay. Awesome. That's what I was hoping to hear.
Are there any other questions? I want to thank them because this is actually a great idea. As you notice, we started with Given Street, trying to build in preschool, trying to catch them early. Many of our our babies, they come ready. They work iPhones and iPads better than some of us. And so we want to tap into that and get them in and hook them in as early as we can. And so I'm really glad that when Ms. Usher brought this to my attention, she knew it was going to really be exciting to me because I'm always about this. What can we do? We send them running and playing. But what can we do to get them in the system as early as we can? And we don't have to try to do makeup time in second grade, third grade, and we can start them off early. So I'm very excited for the community, for the parents, and for the school district that we're able to offer this in real life. I hope we continue this trend throughout the county. Thank you for your hard work, both of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our last item is also going to be Mrs. Townley. As you know, the new executive order was released, and we got it, and we have a deadline that we have to meet by December the 15th. However, as we were preparing our agenda, it just when it fell, we figured we would get it in. One, so we can update the board on what we're doing and how we are moving forward, the plan for that executive order that has extended our e-learning classes. And so our community will know because this is our only meeting this month, and we wanted them to be aware of what we're doing. So I know many of them are making plans. So Ms. Townley has put together a PowerPoint for you. Again, we'll be submitting our plan to DOE after today to make our 15th deadline. But I think we really have a good solid plan. The teams are still working, and we're going to continue to work the rest of this month in making sure we are prepared if anything else happens. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Townley right now to share the plan with you.
Thank you, Mrs. Byrd. And again, this is just an overview of our most recent executive order, EO 07. And so in this particular order, we have seven assurances that the district must abide by. And many of them are the same as what's in our current ICP, especially Assurances 1, 2, 3, and 4, although 3 does have a little more specificity around our e-school program. But I want to draw your attention to Assurances 5, 6, and 7 because they become highlighted in the next phase of the plan. But ensuring student success and the innovative learning modality with parental involvement. So there are a few more stipulations about our students in e-school and and them making adequate academic progress. Enhance outreach and truancy for attendance purposes for our students. And then our plans of how we're supporting our staff with continuous professional development. And so four key areas that are being written into our plan. And I tend to think of this as almost just an appendix into our current ICP. So the ICP that you all are familiar with will continue with these four areas that are being enhanced. And so the first one is our intervention plan, continuing to focus on closing our achievement gaps, our after-school weekend and summer programs that will provide to help target and reach our students that may have had academic losses or just need some additional support during this time. And those interventions are being put into place. A component of this portion also allows our teachers a little bit more time to get those intensive reading interventions by securing their reading endorsement through June 30th. So that was a little piece of good news. Then in our innovative learning modality, this is definitely a place where we can continue our e-school. So that's been a big question that parents have had. But it provides that the district will give written notice if a student is not making adequate progress and describe the associated education risks. So we have developed a letter that is being programmatically formatted through Focus. And so it'll include all the students' relevant demographic informations that we're very excited that it streamlines the process for schools because it can become quite cumbersome with all that written notification. And so just really thankful for the team of pulling this together over the last week. And so adequate progress, if a student's not making adequate progress, the letter will essentially be generated if any of the following categories are true for the student that is in e-school. Their most recent FSA score is at a level one or level two. They are below grade-level performance on our most recent progress monitoring assessment. So many of you are familiar with STAR, our quarterly exams. They have a D or an F grade posted. They have an attendance rate below 90%. They have a grade point average below 2.0. Or if there are 11th and 12th graders, they're missing their graduation assessment requirement. So those are the components that will essentially trigger a letter to notify parents that they're not making progress. And then the schools must obtain that acknowledgement back from the parent. So we're working with our administrators and our guidance counselors to not only just send that letter, but having those conversations, letting the parent know the letter's coming, maybe sending them an alert through School AG or Parent Portal. And so just following up and how we're documenting those attempts and those notifications as well. And so then there are some tracking pieces that go on at the school level as well. Also, within this component, part of students being successful that we've noticed is having them engaged and their cameras on during when teachers giving live instruction. So we are integrating that piece as well. So if it's a time in e-school where the teacher is speaking directly to the students, just like I will be speaking to you now, then we would ask them to all have their cameras on during that time to help that increase that student engagement. Enhanced outreach, focus on trying to find our students that we still have not yet accounted for. But we are actually making great strides in this area. We still have students that we are trying to locate, but that number has continuously decreased. In September, we had around 2,100 students that we were still working towards. Then we got down to around 1,300 and now we're down to just 615 that are ultimately deemed as whereabouts unknown. And then there's also a component here about pre-kindergarten and maximizing those efforts. So our Head Start program has been especially working hard in this area. We have 942 available spots, of which 759 are filled and we plan to be full by the end of January. And then we have actually also increased our kindergarten population and we're up to about 95% of where we were this time last year. So that's improved also. And then for our professional development, just really spelling out all the options that we're providing for teachers throughout the second semester, as well as what we've done in the first semester. Much of that has been around our learning management system implementation with SchoolAG. But various content webinars, ongoing school support, on-demand PD, online self-paced courses. We're really offering a lot of different options that we may not have been as, as deep with prior to the pandemic. And so if we can meet all those and get our plan approved, then the applicability of it all is that we maintain financial stability for spring 2021. It gives us further directions for students that are not making adequate progress and still continues to provide parents choices during the pandemic.
Thank you. And one of the things I will add is that, as you know, when the governor and the commissioner held a press conference, one of the things they said they wanted to make sure that parents had options to schooling, so e-learning and face-to-face. They wanted to contain those options. So as we're trying to bring students back in, and we started this last month, I believe, trying to bring our students back in once we saw quarter one grades, to get them back in who were not successful. The one thing on the letter that we're actually making sure we put on it, if a parent opt out not to send their kid back to face-to-face because they're not doing well, they're going to have to sign off on that. So there's an agreement that they understand the reason we're asking them to come back face-to-face, but they're signing off that they are waiving that option to bring them back into face-to-face. We're still going to do everything we can with them doing e-learning, but we want to make sure they are very well aware why we're asking them to do face-to-face. A lot of struggling students sometimes do not do well in an e-learning setting. They need an actual teacher in front of them. So this is one of the pieces that we're putting in place as well. And so when it comes to also trying to find a little students, early in the year when we first went to e-learning, we had a lot of students we could not locate, you know, we did not know where they were. So after the break, one of the things we're going to do is go back to what we did before, is where we had the school resource officers and some of our social workers to try to knock on doors and find out, well, these kids are not showing up, where are they? You know, if they're in school. So we're going to still try again because sometimes at the break and after a, the winter break, you see students that shift off and with them being on e-learning, they may not come back on. So we want to make sure we can account for them. So we have those things that we're already putting in place. So I wanted to make sure I highlight those things as well. Are there questions, Mrs. Fields, Mrs. Miller, then Ms. Reynolds?
First thing is thanks, Ms. Townley, for your thorough PowerPoint. But the, the, the idea that I'm having right now, I can't hardly hear anything. It's like everybody's muffled. And this is very important. So I'm wondering, can we get a copy of that PowerPoint, please? And then the other question that I have is, are we going to allow students that are currently at their school to go to, to e-learning if they choose to, or is it only going to be one-sided?
Well, part of the executive order is to provide parents that choice, but not to have it during certain timelines like we did at the end of quarter one. One of the pieces within the executive order is that it must be done in a reasonable amount of time. So we have been working with families. We've had families experience different hardships or have different situations. And so they notify their principal and then the principal and the regional work to make sure that the family can be accommodated. So even with all of this, even with the notification of the e-school not making academic progress or if a family has a change in circumstance, we're working with those as they come in, as they are able to get that letter ready, send that home and turn it around as close as we can within no more than five school days. And that's part of this new executive order, that we don't have certain time periods that only families can make changes.
And the other thing that I would say, I, I've heard from some parents where they have transitioned back to their home school that child has from e-learning and that they need some, some grace from some of the staff that they're not getting. I'm not saying that all the staff is not providing grace, but some are not. And so I think everybody needs to be mindful that there's a transition period. They're transitioning from being home and then getting back into the classroom environment. So I don't know what that looks like as far as having conversation or in your meetings or whatever that you have to, to just really take into consideration that it's a struggle. The e-learning is a struggle for everybody. It's a struggle for the staff, it's a struggle for the parents and for the children. And, and the bottom line is that some of the parents are literally working maybe three days a week at home and then they go into their workplace two days a week and then that child is left at home with no supervision. That's, that's just the bottom line for some of the families. So again, I would just say grace and I would say mercy.
Yes, ma'am. We had a great meeting with our principals last week and we're following up with them with some updates from the programmers. So we'll be sure to include that part too. But we did, one of our themes of the meeting last week was grace, mercy, and flexibility. So we, it is a big transition for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Miller?
Thank you. I'd also heard from parents who were looking to go with the increase in COVID numbers. They were looking for the option to go to e-learning. So thank you for answering that question. My other question was, you know, one struggle we have in Title I schools, specifically in high schools, is we don't have, we cannot mandate parents, there's no mandate for parents to participate or engage. And that's unfortunate because the children miss out when we don't have parent engagement. But that is the huge difference between schools that can have those kinds of contracts with parents. Who was, what member of the school, is it administrators or teachers, that will be working with the low-performing e-learners to engage the parent? And if they cannot, are they just to document that they've attempted?
No, we talked about that in link last week with the principals. We are only giving access to our school counselors and our administrators to this format of the letter and Focus and the different reports of which students are not making adequate progress for much of the reasons that you've outlined. You know, that's a conversation piece that requires, you know, some, some back and forth dialogue. It's not just, you know, put a stamp on it and send this letter home in the mail. We really need to reach out to those students, their families. In high school, you know, if we can't get ahold of a parent, it very well may be a conversation with the student. And, and so continuing to work on that. So it's not just send the letter home or email the letter. It's, it's really reaching out and making those good faith efforts to have that dialogue about what are the consequences? Ms. Byrd referred to the acknowledgement of not making adequate academic progress. And, you know, some things, retention, not graduating, could all be very real consequences for students not making adequate progress. So those are types of conversations that really need to happen with the counselors, with our administrators. And then we also, if we're still not being successful, have a plan to work with our social workers to help get out to the homes.
And that's when the counselors would suggest them returning face-to-face if they're in that kind of dire situation. The only other question I had, for students who are out who have support services via IEPs that were out for that long amount of time, I've been told that there's conversation that there was a state initiative or, or some kind of forgiveness for those hours for support services and they were not, they will not have to be made up. I haven't received that. Okay, I haven't, okay, I wanted to confirm that that's not the case and that we're working to provide support services as they are, as IDA requires. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I haven't heard that.
Thank you. Great question, Mrs. Miller. We did have a lot of conversation about the acknowledgement. Your question about who's going to be responsible for it. And really, because this is very new and we want to make sure that we'll be able to deal with the parents and answer those questions, we are asking those administrators. And we're actually going to have them to certify that at the end. So we know contact was made with those children and those families. So that was a great question, that was something we really discussed in line. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you. And thank you, Michelle, for, I realize that this order came out last Monday, I believe. So thank you for the quick turnaround on all of this. Tell your husband that we love him and we apologize for all the time we take from him. But, so I have two questions. First is, one of the things you mentioned is if they have a, have a D in any of their classes, that that would be a flag. Is that a D that would have posted maybe before a grade recovery packet was turned in and could have brought the grade up to a C?
Yes. Okay. So it, the way, the, the way it will work in Focus is that the letter is in real time. So if a, if we run, if we were to run the letter today, it's, it's not quite ready yet. But if we, let's say we were to run it today and the student had a D or an F from quarter one posted, or they currently were sitting with a D or F, either one would trigger the letter to populate. So as it, as the semester builds and if that's what's posted on their report card, it's going to trigger the letter. Or if that's what their current grade is in the teacher's grade book, it's going to trigger the letter.
Okay. So, but if they submitted on, if it was originally a D or an F for quarter one and they then did the grade recovery packet, they then could go back and change the grade to bring it up to a C?
They could.
So then if they pulled it right now, they would have, I just want to make sure, we hear a lot from those teachers that this kid logged in but didn't do anything all semester long. And then all of a sudden they fill out this packet and then, I just want to make sure that we're catching those kids that maybe aren't turning in or doing anything. That we catch them before that happens again, if that makes sense.
Right. It could potentially be a concern if, if the, if the teacher and student have already completed that and it's been expedited and posted already. But I'll double check with the programmers because there are some notes that we can capture, so.
Awesome, I appreciate that. And then my second question is, and I realize that they're still writing all of this, but do we have any idea how many students we think we're looking at? Or can you get, get us that information once we have a better number?
So we currently have 27,184 students in e-school. And if I would have ran the report yesterday, we were pushing 20,000 that would get the letter. We're really seeing an increase in Ds and Fs for students in e-school. It varies by grade level, it varies by content area, but across the board, an increase in Ds and Fs. And there was actually an article that came out this morning in one of the papers that that's a trend statewide.
And is that, is middle school, high school, elementary school kind of across the board seems pretty even? Or is there any?
It is. I can give you a couple of talking points, just random ones. Grade four ELA, we have an 11% decrease in Ds and Fs. Grade five science, a 7.4% decrease from this time last year. All of these are in relation to this time last year. Grade six science, 9%. Grade seven ELA, 15%. High school US history, 15%. I mean, it's, it's across the board.
Everywhere.
In every content area, pretty much in every grade level.
Thank you. Mrs. Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. A couple of things. One is thank you for addressing the continuation of e-learning. I know that several parents have contacted me over the last month or so, asking what did it look like? And I said, as soon as we find out from the state, we'll let everybody know. So it's great to know that those that, you know, may still feel compromised in their homes for whatever reason that the children can continue to e-learn. I am a little bit afraid for what that's going to look like on an educational level for those students because not every parent, as has been mentioned, you know, is able to be home and supervise, whether it be a parent, grandparent, aunt, uncle, whomever. So let's hope and pray that they continue to get the support that they need at home to be successful in the e-learning situation if they choose that. Secondly, I did have parents contact me and I spoke with Superintendent about it regarding the accessibility of the electronic devices. And so a lot of folks have said, you know, if the group that came back gave their device back, then I wasn't able to get one from the school because we ran out. And we did, in fact, run out, I get that. So my thought is if more children, are you seeing, I guess my question is, if we are continuing to offer the e-learning option, which we are, and I know that we, most of our stuff has run out, are we getting enough kids back that we're able to take those and repurpose them and give them to other children? Or not, what does the, the electronic device situation look like countywide?
Well, if we're just purely looking at numbers, you know, we should have enough to accommodate the students that are left in e-school. So I would think if, if a parent doesn't have a device from their school at this point, you know, if they reach out to us, we can figure that out. Dr. Berrios and her team have been very active in trying to, to make those transfers of devices if we need to or whatnot. But as the devices are coming back in, then our network managers are, you know, updating them. We have had some that have been broken and things of that nature.
Sure.
And we continue to order more devices, but there is a little bit of a lag time in getting them in. So we are still working on that. And I would just encourage, if that's someone's situation.
It is.
They need, yeah, just let us know because we should be able to take care of that.
Okay, I will do that, thank you.
Ms. Reynolds?
All right, just going off of a little bit of what Lori said while we have you. Do we have devices for students that are quarantining?
At times.
Okay.
So that's, you know, ideally, we would kind of quickly pivot them.
Come up behind you to save you. Just so you know.
Yeah, that's good. Ideally, that would be what would happen. But we haven't, you know, this has been our first year with our SchoolAG implementation, our learning management system. And some of our, our teachers are just, really just trying to keep everything afloat. And so some of them have become more versed in it than others. So there may be times where a class or a group of students are quarantined and it's a very smooth transition. We're able to give them a device, they're able to log on and, and tune in, if you will, to their class, just like if they were there in person. And then we have other places where maybe the teacher's been full-time face-to-face all year and they may not be as up to speed on their SchoolAG implementation as others. They're just trying to keep together all the safety protocols and other demands of this school year. And they may be working paper, pencil or, or other ways. But where, where we can, we're trying. But there, but I can't tell you with 100% that that's happening in every situation.
Thank you.
And I know about the barriers to share and she's going to enlighten us a little bit on a device, it's on.
Yeah, so we, we actually discussed devices yesterday. Currently, we have 7,400, 74,500 devices that are less, five years or less. So we do have several thousand devices that are in that five, six, or seven year that are still operational. But we don't, we try not to send those home because they're harder, they're, they're just not functioning as well and they take more care and feeding to, to use. But we, as we gave out devices, we encouraged them as much as possible to give them the devices that were three years or less. That didn't always happen. So sometimes we've had some of those issues. But we really, we really do have ample devices. Part of the challenge is some of them are in carts and then when they have to, you know, very quickly, they've got a whole classroom that goes out or several kids that goes out. I think it takes time to undo those carts and, and to check them out. But as Ms. Townley said, I think we, I feel confident we have enough of the devices. I think part of it is the support and resources. And then in some cases, as Ms. Townley said, when they're brick and mortar and they're not using SchoolAG as often and all of a sudden now they're thrown into having to use that as their primary mode, it's, there's some learning curves.
Ms. Cunningham?
Yeah, a couple of follow-up questions or comments. So I heard from some parents in the quarantine situation, the same thing, they were not able to get a device and they have a home iPad or some type of other device and thought that they could only be connected to ours for the learning to happen. I know that's not true. So I don't know if there's a way as we communicate going forward to let folks know that if you have a computer, you have an iPad, you have a tablet, da-da-da-da-da, that you are able to access the district, you don't have to have a district. I know that sounds strange to everybody sitting here, but I got the call, so I'm just passing it along. Because if one person actually took the time to contact, there's probably others that are in a similar situation. And then secondly, in the quarantine situation, oftentimes the children are able to pick up a packet or they have a packet. up a packet or they have a packet that goes with them. Some kids don't have a whole lot to do at home and maybe in the first few days of the 14 days, they complete that work. It would be nice, as a suggestion, to put something behind that that says, when you are done, here are some other sites and things that you can access to continue learning rather than doing nothing for the remainder of the 10 or 12 days. Just
Yep.
Things that I'm hearing out there that I wanted to pass along because it's legitimate and it would help if they knew they could access more information. And that's not every place, I get it in every school, but I have heard it a few times now in the last few weeks. So anything we can do to keep that mind going, as you indicated,
Right.
is just awesome to keep them engaged if they're in that quarantine situation or sitting at home and could be quite bored, so.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, random question. Do we issue based on, you know, age appropriateness? For example, you know, a K through third grader, maybe, you know, would like maybe a tablet and be more familiar with the tablet rather than a laptop and, and using a mouse? And the appropriateness of that?
See, yeah, so we pretty much standardized on the iPad at the elementary level.
Gotcha.
So, I mean, they still have some laptops, but the majority of what the elementaries are using are iPads.
Perfect, okay, great. And then going, looking back at that previous education plan, we noted hotspots being issued as well for e-learning. Is that still happening? And would you say that we, we recognize that everyone has access points, adequate connectivity when they're moving to that e-learning environment?
So we, we have given out all that we have available. Some of the challenges that we do have is even if we give them a Mi-Fi, if they don't have that cellular access, the Mi-Fis don't work very well. In fact, we just recently had a situation where we gave them a Mi-Fi and they just didn't, it wasn't, it wasn't a strong enough connection for them. So we are working through some of those challenges. We do have the bus routers installed. We have not used those at this point because we've primarily been dealing with, you know, students and the change in transportation. But we have that as, as something that we're looking at beginning to use as well. And we are, there are some other things that we're, that are in the works that we're considering in terms of how do we reach various neighborhoods that, that may be in close proximity to, to the schools. But it's, it's, it's definitely a challenge.
Great.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, Ms. Townley, thanks for your calming spirit. I mean, the crazy amount of work in that previous education plan and the assurances. Moving forward, it's great to see that, you know, we're monitoring that progress. That's affirming, very affirming as we sort of want to continue that student success. I know the heaviness of teachers that are managing both, you know, the brick and mortar and synchronous, it's heavy. But it was, it's interesting that I, I'm hearing some schools have teachers that are dedicated just to the synchronous and then are not managing the dual situations. Are they getting some feedback? Is there a unified system across the board? What are you thinking moving forward for that?
That really is driven at the school level with their master schedule and based on student needs with course requests, teacher certification. It really is challenging, especially with some of our, what we refer to as singleton courses. Like maybe, I've used this example before, but I'll use my husband again as an example. He's the only teacher that teaches his courses at his school. And so all, every single one of his periods are blended. And so he has face-to-face kids and online students and that, that happens just by nature of the content that he teaches. So in some places, it really is almost unavoidable. It's very, very challenging as students are able to change their selection and parents have choice and, and the timeframes that we are no longer allowed to kind of hold parents to, that adds another layer to complicate that for our schools. I think principals are trying the best they can and, and everyone recognizes how incredibly hard our teachers are working this year. They have, they have learned so much and they, they've grown and it, but it is still continuously challenging. And so we're collecting feedback from them, especially from the different content areas to try to see how we can make improvements. But it, it really boils down to the school and the courses and the teachers that are certified to fulfill those courses for the students.
Yeah, great. Thank you guys so much.
Yep.
Are there any other questions? Thank you. We will, we will be submitting our plan December the 15th and I'll make sure that we send that to you as well as the PowerPoint. And we apologize that you didn't get it ahead of time. We were working quite fiercely to get it in on this meeting since we got it just last week so we can get it up to the state by next week. So we'll make sure you get the PowerPoint and the final plan that we sent up. So thank you, ladies, and thank you for all you did.
Thank you. Thank you so much. A lot of work.
And Madam Chair, at this time, we have two information items. You have the PEF Foundation Audit as well as the PEF Board. Are there any questions? And I do believe I saw Ms. Copeland walk in. If you had any questions for her at this time. I did see her. She's just like, Mrs. Cunningham?
Just a comment, you can stay there. Just want to tell you how much we appreciate you, your staff, and how wonderful our Polk Education Foundation is in supporting our students and our teachers with the free teacher markets and our students with scholarships. You all do an amazing job. So your audit is always commendable because you all run a, you run a great tight ship. And I'm so excited to see you back and working hard and we appreciate all that you do. So thank you to you and your wonderful board.
Ms. Reynolds?
Just to echo that, I can't tell you how excited I am for it to be my turn to get to sit on your board starting this week. But thank you for all that you do, especially in a year that we're having to flip everything, flipping fundraising events and how you, most of what you do, it's our big Teacher of the Year celebration and our superintendent, you know, all of our things that gather a lot of people. So the innovation that you've brought to all of that has been tremendous, specifically our prize patrol, but I think most of us have gotten to go on this week. So thank you for all you're doing to keep things going.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. If there are no other comments, our portion of this agenda is, is finished. At this time, I'll turn the meeting now over to you.
Wonderful, thank you, Madam Superintendent. Okay, the next item on our agenda is to review our agenda for this evening's board meeting. So, board members, what I'd like to do is just go through the consent agenda. And then if you have any questions, let me know. Under Business Services, General Items, Item 8 through Item 13. Do we have any questions? Items 8 through Items 13. Okay, next, we would have Items 14 through Items 21. Item 14 through Item 21. Next, we would have Item 22 through Items 25. Items 22 through Item 25. Any questions? That concludes our consent agenda. Now we are to the regular. We have Items 26 through 28. 26 through 28 on the regular agenda. And then we have Items 29 through 31. Items 29 through 31 on the regular agenda. Any questions? Next, we have our public hearing. We have two items, 32 and 33. Any questions? Okay, and that pretty much, then we have our auditors' report. Any questions on Item 37? We have two new nominees being brought forward today. Ms. Ren, Ms. Miller, sorry.
I apologize, I stepped out. I do have a question, I had polled number 31. I don't, we can go back to that at the end if you prefer.
You can do that now, that's fine, sure, go ahead.
I just, I polled 31, I don't know if anybody will be there to address it. But because we had approved something in July and we're changing the language, I was hoping we would get like an explanation publicly for people that, that will question the difference from the July 28th approval.
Well, after researching that a bit, after I saw it, it looks as though when we originally proved it, there was a not to exceed the $300,000. And that didn't cover enough students. And now with the student numbers exceeding or approaching 600 is what I saw, we're looking at $1.2 million to be able to provide it. So what we're doing really, the way I worded the item would be to remove that not to exceed so that we could continue to provide the virtual school up to the 1.2 and change. I don't have it written here, but, so that's what I think the difference is. We capped it at 300,000, but the Polk Virtual has exceeded that. And so they're asking us to open that up. Am I correct, Madam Superintendent?
You are correct. With us going to e-learning, you have about 600 students sitting over in K-12. We give the three different options. They, they grow as well. So when you're looking at what it costs per student per semester, it's 2,000, I believe, 187, $47.50. So when you do that, it is going to come out to the 1.2. That's why we're doing it because with the not to exceed 300, it does not cover those students, the addition that you went into because of e-learning.
And this is for Polk Virtual, not
Yes, Polk Virtual.
Not Florida Virtual, not Florida K-12. It's the K-12 platform inside Polk Virtual.
Correct.
That's correct, not Florida.
Not Florida. Do you know how many students we were serving with the 300, like what the increase has been?
For the, how many students we were serving before for the 300,000? We can have that for you.
Okay, I appreciate that, if someone could send it, thank you.
Great question, though, thank you. Okay, any other questions on the agenda through tonight? I think we were on Item 37, the two nominees for the audits and Audit and Finance Committee. Any questions? And Ms. Matthews, you'll come forward tonight and read the bios and then we'll vote on them individually. All right, thank you. Okay, that concludes our review of our agenda for tonight's meeting. Next comes to our School Board Committee Assignments. So board members, I reviewed all of your requests and tried to give everybody their first choice, so I can, I think I came pretty close. So take one and pass it. I'll give you a minute and then I'll read through them for the record. And let's discuss them. If anybody has a question or would like to know how that decision was made, I'd be happy to go through it with you today. I tried to look back on previous assignments and looking forward and also taking into account each individual and what they indicated as their preference. So going down the list, the committee assignments, Audit Committee would be Ms. Kay Fields. The Central Florida Public School Board's Coalition would be Sarah Fortney. She requested to stay on that if possible and having asked Ms. Miller if she would be an alternate. And then the Polk County Head Start would be Sarah Fortney. Once again, she requested that. And the Polk Education Foundation Board of Directors would be this year, Sarah Beth Reynolds, District 4. And the way that works is it rotates through each district. So Ms. Fortney, District 3, was on it last year, so it naturally rotates now to District 4. Polk Vision Liaison, this is a two-year term. This year, we had Sarah Beth Reynolds serving on the Polk Vision Liaison Operating Board. And this is a two-year term. And so with Ms. Reynolds coming off, she had requested to move up to the Board of Directors. So I moved Sarah Beth Reynolds to the Polk Vision Board of Directors, which again is a two-year term, so this would be her first year of two. And then Ms. Miller indicated in her preferences that she would like to be involved with the Polk Vision. And so I put Ms. Miller in for her first year for this year, but she would need to serve the two-year term. So it would be this year hopefully and next year. Next, we have our Sales Tax Oversight Committee. And I put Mr. William Allen in there and then added Mr. Wilson as the alternate to that. And then on the committee assignment that the board votes on, we have our FSBA Board of Directors and our FSBA Legislative Committee, which we voted on this past summer for the coming year. So we'll be looking at those going forward. But for right now, the Board of Directors for FSBA is Sarah Beth Reynolds with Sarah Fortney as the alternate. And the FSBA Legislative Committee is Sarah Beth Reynolds and Lisa Miller as the alternate. And then the two that we'll be voting on tonight would be the Polk Vision Board of Directors with Sarah Beth Reynolds serving her first year. And I explained, you know, moving from the operating board to the Board of Directors. And then the Value Adjustment Board, Lynn Wilson requested to stay on that. And then I have Mr. William Allen as his alternate. So with your blessing, I open it up for discussion if anybody has any comments, questions, or would like to present any changes.
I just appreciate your work on trying to figure out seven different avenues.
Trying to do it and make sure everybody's, you know, got at least a first, if not a second choice, so. And then the two tonight that are on the board would be the Polk Vision Board of Directors for Sarah Beth and the Value Adjustment Board for Lynn Wilson. So if everybody's good, then we'll carry that through to our board meeting this evening. Okay, so the committee assignments are done. The next thing I wanted to bring up to the board is that I've been remiss in getting our employee evaluations done this year with COVID and campaigning and a daughter graduating. It's been quite the go. So I reached out to our HR and realized that we can go ahead and continue to do that. So Susan has the performance reviews ready to go out to the board. My question is, when could you have them done by? If she were to send, email those out to the board tomorrow, would you be able to have them completed by the 18th, by the time we all go on break? Or would you prefer time into the new year? It's completely up to you.
My preference would be able to do them while we're over break.
You would?
If possible.
Okay.
If it doesn't mess anybody else up.
No, so if we were to look at our calendars, let's see, could we say by the end of the first week? Well, we're going to be coming back on the 12th for our work session for our Superintendent's search. Would you be able, I, I'm going to say the 8th. Would that work for most folks? And then if you've got to straggle a day or two, if you can at least get it to me no later than January the 12th, that would be so appreciated. Susan, would that work, give you time to compile? Anybody have any other preferences? Ms. Fields?
I don't have a preference, but for clarity, I don't, I think Ms. Allen needs to know that he's not expected to do an evaluation.
Yeah, I was going to get with him after the meeting.
All right, just want to make sure he understands that.
Oh, yeah, because he hasn't been here. Yes. Awesome, okay. So we'll go ahead and send you those performance reviews and they would be due back no later than January the 12th. How's that? If you can get them back by the 8th, it would be appreciated. Give Susan some time to compile it. And then if I have any questions, so let's change that to the 8th of January, that Friday, so that we can try to get them compiled. And if I have any questions, I can ask you on the 12th. That be all right?
That's fine.
All right, thank you. I want to also announce that our board docs, we're moving from e-agenda into board docs. I think we've been talking about that. So we are going to have training board members after our February 9th work session. So if you'll kind of make a note, I'm not really sure of the timing. I need to get with Superintendent on the agenda for that day as we move closer. But if you would be so kind and perhaps keep your day open till about 2:00 on the 9th. If the agenda's not very full for the work session, we can easily do that before noon, but I just don't know until we have a chance to review that agenda. So I just want to announce that board docs training will follow our regular work session on Tuesday, February the 9th. And then the purpose for that is that we're going to go live with board docs a month later on our March 9th School Board Meeting. So March 9th School Board Meeting will be live with board docs. So hopefully, we can all get trained and be good at this, so. Okay, now I'm going to move to board comments, starting with Ms. Reynolds.
You're starting with me.
You're starting with me.
Well, yeah.
I'm the first one today.
Comment for work session.
Normally, there's just people on both sides.
I know, I know. It's quiet today.
I don't believe I have anything today. I don't think so.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
No comment, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Allen?
No comment as well.
Okay. Ms. Fields?
I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we, um...
I have something, excuse me. I'm sorry. Is there any way for us to start having the superintendent's search as a part of our agenda each time we have meetings, like as we did when we were trying to figure out about the contracts for Wes and Carol, where if there's anything that needs to be discussed, any updates, those can be given? Are you understanding what I'm, what I'm asking?
No. Sorry.
Okay. When we were trying to make a decision about Wes and Carol's contract and making the revisions and stuff, it came up on the agenda every meeting, even if we had no discussion, it was there. So what I'm asking is, is it possible for us to have an update on the superintendent's search or just a superintendent's search on the agenda so that if anybody have any questions, if we need an update, we'll have it there to discuss? It is open.
Okay, okay. What I've been doing the last few meetings is I do that, I have a huge update for you on everything coming up tonight during the board meeting, during my board report. So rather than being redundant and doing it now, which I can, then I'm going to be doing it again tonight. Is that what you would like?
Are we going to be able to ask questions tonight?
Or if you want to, let's do it now. Go ahead with your board comments. If you have questions, let's go ahead and address them now.
I would like to know, give us an update on the letters that went out to the screening committee members. Have we done that yet?
Yes.
And what kind of response have we gotten?
From what I understand, talking to Susan today, is that the letter, Andrea sent the letters this morning, they went out.
Okay.
So we've not yet received.
This is initial phase?
Yes, yeah, yeah. The letters just went out, so that's really kind of exciting, so, yeah.
And this may be a question for Susan because she's the one that's been contacting all of them. Have you gotten positive responses from everybody you've contacted? Is there?
I've contacted everyone together.
Email, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
It'll be fun to see what comes back, so, yeah. Okay, any other questions or comments? Madam Superintendent, I'm going to turn it back over to you then.
We don't have anything else on our end. I think that concludes this, and we do have discipline that will start at 4:00, and from what we know, there's no parents. So we'll have discipline at 4:00. Mr. Bridges, do we need to just make sure it's clear in here, or do we want to move across the hall for discipline?
Probably ought to do it in here so that we can maintain social distancing for board members, but we'll clear the hall beforehand, and we need to make sure that there's no live feed outside of this room at that time.
Okay, thank you. We'll make sure we take care of those things.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so our work session is concluded, and board members will meet back here at 4:00 for our discipline meeting. Thank you.